All right, well, the work session for the Village of Pleasantville Village Board. Today is Wednesday, October 11th, a couple of days past. They needed to close like a Monday holiday. First item on our agenda is continued discussion regarding village capital projects. Anthony Carr, our village engineer and superintendent of Public Works is online. So we have a bunch of things to talk about. Perhaps Anthony, we should start with the pool. What do you think?
Mayor, that sounds good. Am I coming in clear?
Clear, Isabel.
All right, for the most part, you and the board are. But it's a bit choppy, so if you do say or ask something, I don't respond. I'm not ignoring you. I just probably can't understand or decipher, but for the most part, I could see you all and hear you mostly clear. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll take it away. And please, by all means, if there's any questions or comments along the way, just feel free to interrupt at that moment, so you don't forget your place or what question you may want to ask. But we'll start with the village pool reconstruction project, so we are making significant progress. The target date for construction is still September of 2024. A number of things need to happen before that occurs, and that is the following. We need to get questions to County Department of Health approval. The consultant, Rem Kunis Engineering, has submitted their second set of drawings, or I'll say, application submission to the Health Department. We do anticipate a third, but fairly light round of comments, and that third round will likely be the final round. So we are moving forward with that. The Health Department, like I said, only had minor comments so far. The feedback that the consultant has gotten before the formal comments have been issued for round two is that there's not going to be a lot of them, so there's going to be no showstoppers at this point. So that second application, that second round, also the resubmission, that was submitted to the Health Department in September. So they have that. They're going to probably take two months, give or take, to get the comments back, you know, via comment letter. But we expected that, and we do anticipate having Health Department approval by the end of this year, calendar year, December of 2023. Moving on to the non-pool items within the pool, which is the site civil work, which is generally the flood mitigation, the onsite other drainage improvements that we're doing, the patio, the regrading, basically everything that's not the pool. The consultant, De Bruin Engineering, is doing a very good job. They've advanced the design development drawings, which is the stage before construction level, to about 60%. Typically, design development drawings are produced at 30, 60, and 90% completion levels, right? 90% being more detailed, 30% being less detailed. So we're at that 60% DD, they call it, level, which will be submitted to the regulatory agencies within the next week, and no later than October 22nd, Bob De Bruin has assured us. And those regulatory agencies are the federal and state agencies that govern the project. Aside from any local approvals, just talking state and federal would be the DEC for any work contiguous or within the Nantihagen Brook, and also the Army Corps for any work deemed within a water body known as a navigable water body. The Army Corps might say they don't have any involvement, but we'll let them say that, and we won't assume it. So we will have that submission to the US Army Corps and the DEC by the, before the end of this month. We don't know how long they're going to take, but we do assume probably a three to six month permit period between receiving initial comments, revising the plans, and kind of starting that dialogue and iteration between the regulatory agencies and our project. So we do, we do plan to have the state and federal permitting completed. Again, this is just an anticipation, anticipated deadline, but by the spring, by the spring of 2024, which positions both consultants, the pool consultant and the site civil consultant, to begin what's called construction documents, or also known as CDs, as opposed to DDs, which are just basically more detailed than the design development and really fine tunes the drawings so the contractor could accurately bid and build the project. So working backwards, September 2024, right after Labor Day, we start the construction. Spring 2024 through summer of 2024, we would develop construction documents, i.e. drawings and project specifications. And then between spring of 2024, working back to now, we will be securing Health Department approval and the regulatory agency approval. And the project, also concurrently, when working with the village administrator, we do think it's a good idea to have CalGy, a third-party estimator, take a look at the 60% design development plan. So those are the drawings that are going to be submitted to the Army Corps and to the, and to the DEC as far as the site civil, so the non-pool work. We want to have CalGy look at that and have them look at pretty much the Health Department drawings, which are at a 90% level right now, too. So those drawings are done, submitted, as I noted earlier. But now we're going to wait until we get the drawings from De Bruin, we'll package that up. CalGy is expecting it, and you and the board, Mayor, will have a good idea, and obviously the village administrator as well, as to where this project will be estimated. I mean, I think it's still likely in the $4 to $6 million range. I think $6 million is probably on the higher side. And, you know, depending on contractor's schedule, COVID residual, hunger for work. I do think that the bids will be competitive, but I won't speculate too much, and I'll defer to CalGy to give us an accurate estimate that you can use for bonding purposes.
So you want to talk about that, obviously. If this turned into a $6 million project, we've got a lot of rethinking to do with that.
Understood. A lot of, a lot of value, a lot of value engineering, as they say. I did want to show you a few, a few plans, a few videos from the recent September 29th storm. I wanted to just show you two, two drawings from De Bruin that kind of gives light, so I'll share the screen. I'm a picture person, so it helps when I, when I see pictures as well. Okay, if you could see my, see my screen, there is a black and white drawing, C001. This is a De Bruin drawing. This is the village pool project. Lake Street here, parking lot entrance here, existing recreation building, existing in-ground pool. So that's just a relative brook to the left, to the right, or to the west and to the east. So what you see here, and I'll zoom in a little bit, is an existing conditions map of basically pre-flood mitigation. If the village was to do nothing, as conditions exist today, this is generally what the site floods, the flood limits of the site. What I mean by that is you'll see different colors. The purple denotes a 10-year storm level, basically that the water, if you drew a boundary around, this would be the water surface around the entire site, right? So you see the brook, the parking lot around the recreation building, kind of to that spillway with that circular brick house, we'll call it, and then down around through the kiddie pool and around the main pool, right? So the purple is the 10-year storm, the blue is the 25-year storm, and the green is the 100-year storm. And again, 100-year storm is just a storm that has a 1% chance of occurring every year. A 50-year storm is 2% chance, and a 10-year storm is a 10% chance. Obviously, yes, you could have multiple 25-year storms, as we've seen in the past happen. But again, it's all probability statistics that we could certainly delve into in a different meeting. But in the interest of your time, these colors basically show what happens today. And that's based on two things, a stormwater model, that models basically all the water coming out of this pond, which is also generated upstream from the watershed or the drainage area, or whatever you want to call it. But it's where all the water basically accumulates to, which is pond and brook, and then some off-site water, or runoff, I should say, from the south that comes down a very steep embankment. So it captures all the water, it says, okay, based on the size of this spillway and the size of this culvert and the size of the brook, how much does the water spread out? That's basically what the model says. But we've also had the luxury, too, of having some elevation marks that Stephen Kunis had marked during Ida, I believe, and then we provided that information to Dan Meritz, and he added that to the survey, too. So De Bruin, the site civil engineer, took that information and basically used a combination of the field and the model to generate what you see here before you. So, and again, this is the culvert, the dash line here, approximate culvert. That's the pipe or the rectangular stone channel that goes underneath the recreation building and connects the pond downstream to the brook. So this is if you did nothing. I'm going to stop sharing my screen really quickly, switch over to the other drawing, and show you the post-flood mitigation improvements and what the, where the limits basically change. So same, same colors, purples 10-year, blues 25, greens 100-year. You'll notice now, with the addition of a proposed or future box culvert, roughly a five-by-seven-foot concrete box that has the geometry as such, an angle bends, comes around, basically rejoins the brook from east, where the spillway is by the house, the brick house in the pond, goes basically in between the recreation building and the pool. And that's basically your second culvert, because remember, there's one that goes underneath the existing recreation building as it is now. So with the addition of that second culvert, which is sized just for the 25-year storm event, you'll notice that you don't see any of the lines at this point coming over top the proposed future waiting pool and swimming pool. You'll see that the purple, the blue, and the green are all contained basically in this depressed area. Or they call this the spillway, which is basically where the water first overflows when you have a lake or a water body. And then you'll also notice, too, on the, on the west side, where it outlets, Nantihagen Brook, which feeds the flows towards the PCTV site, you'll see, too, that everything's contained over there. And why is that? It's because with the addition of the second culvert, even though you're paying pretty much for a 25-year benefit, you get the benefit of 100-year because you have the dual culverts, right? So you have basically two pipes that are working in tandem. And one could argue, okay, well, that's actually a good thing, too, because if this pipe or this culvert, right, this stone culvert being the older of the two, if it fails, collapses, et cetera, any portion under the building, one, it'd be problematic and hard to get to and costly. But two, you also have a redundancy here. But however, that's not the main purpose. The main purpose is to provide flood mitigation to protect the village asset, which in tandem, combined, basically keeps the water level at, contained within the spillway and then contained here. And as you see, you see nothing over here anymore. So prior, the site was overtopped and completely inundated with water. Now it's not. And again, five-by-seven, five feet high by seven feet wide rectangular concrete box, that's all, that's all the box culvert is. So that's, that's basically the difference between the two plans. That's pre-flood mitigation and post-flood mitigation. This, this plan does not show additional drainage improvements on the site. Pretty much, there'll be a pipe here, there'll be additional catch basins and structures to collect water that flows basically from the south to the north from an upstream, give or take, 12-acre area. That's why this site is very saturated, too. You get a lot of off-site runoff. So it'd be no different than you owning your property and getting your neighbor's drainage. We're getting a lot of neighbor's drainage from up here. That's not necessarily causing the flooding, the, I'll say, the heavy intense flooding, that's coming from the pond. But you do have soggy saturated conditions all around this area that we're going to also address as part of the project that's not shown on this flood mitigation drawing. So you should have a very dry, protected site when the project's completed, if it is completed. I did want to share a few videos that were taken, or pictures, that were taken on the September 29th storm. I think they're, if nothing else, beyond interesting, just for the simple purpose that it shows really the devastation and the issues from the different storm events, which I'll also talk about as well, which is what I calculated earlier in the week, just looking for the videos, just give me one second. Okay. Screen. Let's see, it was momentarily apologizing in the background, goodies. I'll restart the video. You can see this. This is facing towards the pool. The dam is behind you, the brick wall's behind you. So Lake Street is to the right. And you will see that it's really starting to come in into the point where everything was completely browned. And you can see the water level, too. It's going to reach the door sills.
Because I don't know if you'll be able to get over that footprint. But once the fence comes, it's going to get a lot worse. It's going to go like this.
That's, that's generally, as you can see, from, from the spillway. But I did also want to show you another picture that is very telling as well. Not sure if you could see the screen, if you see the picture or not, but let me maybe share.
Do you know how that storm would be classified in terms of the so-called 10-year, 20-year, 100-year?
Absolutely. So, yes. This storm, from my estimation, was between a two- and five-year storm. And I wanted to, I want to take time to kind of backtrack and show you how I arrived at that. So let me share my screen again, bouncing between different windows, I apologize. Okay, can you see a precipitation chart or no? Okay, you'll probably see this now. Okay, so, all right, so this is, this is, no, is, it's called a precipitation frequency estimate. So what they basically do is they give you the 90% confidence interval, meaning that they're 90% sure that you're going to get X amount of rainfall over Y duration, right? So just to take it kind of at a high level, the left column is the duration. You can go as little as five minutes, all the way up to 60 days, right? You'll notice 24 hours highlighted there because I provided this chart to somebody else for our stormwater management regulations. But on the top column here, I should say the top row, from left to right, you got one-year storm, two-year storm, five, 10, 25, 50, 100, 200, 500, 1,000. All right, so you'll see these different numbers, and what these numbers here in bold are, that's the 90% number. So they're pretty sure that, let's just say, a 25-year storm, 4% chance of occurring, generates 6.72 inches, that's in inches. And then obviously, the duration is either in hours or minutes over here. So the 25-year storm for Pleasantville, and this, because this is based on zip code, although it doesn't change too much throughout Westchester, for a 25-year storm event, which is what stormwater management is based on, 6.72 inches is your magic number as far as what you have to treat and manage in stores. So, but what I wanted to go back to and show was the Excel spreadsheet that I put together from NOAA. And it's pretty, again, it's pretty straightforward, but I figured while the information was readily available, I pulled it off from the, from the internet. So 9:29 starts at 0:56, right? That's basically, that's 12:56 in the morning. So in this, when we go all the way down, this is hour by hour. And so all the way down to the end of 9:29, right, 20:56, that's 10:56 PM. So if you start looking and everybody thinks back, the worst times, at least, that we experienced here for public works, and what we observed was between 8:00 AM and 1:00 PM, okay? These, these were your worst six hours. And what this is, the dates and the time on this side, this is the precipitation received every hour. Okay, it's not, it's not cumulative. It just means that between 7:00 and 8:00 AM, you receive a third of an inch. Between 8:00 and 9:00, you received almost a third. So that's kind of generally how, how it's working, but I just wanted to show that. I just wanted to show that if you take your six-hour duration here, which was your worst six hours of the storm, the other numbers are very minute, they're de minimis. If you take your worst six hours, you get 2.62 inches over six hours. And then if you go back to the graph, which I'll do momentarily, that equates to a two to maybe a five-year storm. And why I say maybe a five-year storm is because it's not that 90% confidence interval. It's in the smaller ranges, where it still exists in that smaller range interval, but it's not as common. But to be conservative, I said, okay, you know what, it definitely falls in the two. It could, depending on the, on the analysis, you could argue a five-year storm. So that, that's in a six-hour period. Then I said, okay, well, which, which hour and which two hours were the worst? So I looked at these two hours, which was between 9:00 and 10:00, and 10:00 and 11:00. And I remember these two hours being more intense, just from being here.
For a girl down the street.
I'm sorry? All right, sorry about that. I didn't want to talk over anybody. I know we're, in the interest of time, I just want to cruise through this. This is probably the most deep-dive technical of the updates, but I did want to give it the time that it deserves, so you could sit and understand, and then ask any questions that you may have. But the, the worst two hours were between 9:00 and 10:00, 9:00 to 11:00, excuse me. In which case, you had 1.1 and 1/2 inches. Now, it might not have felt like that. It certainly felt like more. But again, when you extrapolate from the two hours, because remember, you can go down to five minutes, an hour, two hours, six hours from that chart, you really only get a one-to-two-year storm event. And then if you look at, for consistency, if you look at the full 24 hours, we got roughly about 4 and 1/4 inches. When I checked a few different rain gauges, it varied from 4.3 to 4.4 at Westchester County Airport. And again, they might have gotten a little bit more than we did because we were similar to Kisco, and Kisco got a little under four. But just to be conservative and keep the numbers kind of apples to apples, again, that ranged from a two-to-five-year storm, which, which is consistent with the worst two hours and over 24 hours. Now, obviously, you look at 24 hours, you got 4 and 1/4, right? But you got, you got more than half of that in a six-hour span. So, you know, looking at the 24-hour volume and rate is a bit deceiving. You really need to delve down into your worst hour, your worst two hours, because the storms are always changing. That's, that's the thing that, you could look at a 24-hour average, but if you break it down hour by hour, and sometimes even 15 minutes, it can go from a 200 to a 10, back up to 500. So, you know, and that gets kind of crazy to calculate, but just to show you, it's, it's pretty relative, relatively straightforward, that you could argue that this storm had its worst.
Can I ask you a couple more questions? So I'm unclear about how the stormwater, the flood mitigation proposal that you showed us, so what we had considered in the past, is that a completely different proposal? That's my first question. And then the second question is, do we have any kind of estimates on that?
Yes, so it is completely different. The project originally designed had no flood mitigation at all. So basically, if this is happening now for the two-to-five-year storm, yes. I'm sorry, you're breaking up.
Oh, yeah, with respect, all the mitigation plans we did discuss.
So, yeah, Eric, maybe you can speak to this, like, is this a completely different proposal than the flood mitigation proposals we've done?
No, this is one of the mitigation efforts, this is creating a second culvert. So we have the, and then this is creating a second culvert.
Same, as, remember, in the past, we had looked at like
Five, three-year, yeah.
A number of different options. And that, what we had been told is that they would not be as effective as what Anthony is telling us right now. So I'm asking, my question is, is this a different approach? Or were we misled in terms of the?
No, we weren't misled. This is now doing further analysis on the design. The, the twelve, and is that 29, and even more significant storms.
Okay.
Right, so.
Is this the $1.1 million one?
Yes, this, the 25-year storm, I believe, was a, right. So you were, you were showing a bunch of options, a number of options, from De Bruin Engineering who came out. And they looked at, they looked at the storm events after Ida. And then they relied on some empirical data, too, from the staff, about how often this, this floods and what type of damage there is. But the takeaway from the video and from the charts I showed you earlier is that your site is underwater between the two and five-year storm. So the 100 would be devastating. And chances are, it always was flooding at the two-to-five-year storm event. And that is, that is very, that, that actually translates to what De Bruin had said in their report. If you remember the original memo, it did say, or De Bruin did say that at the 10-year storm, the, the dam starts to overtop. So just to go back, this purple line, the inside line, is a 10-year storm. This model and the field data show this site underwater for the 10-year storm, which makes sense, because if, if I see it underwater from a calculated two-to-five-year storm, then yes, a five-year storm, 10-year storm, that purple line is probably just in a little bit more. But remember, this pool was covered, so maybe that purple line was here. So this, this 10-year storm, the site always did this. So De Bruin did give you a list of options, but the, the proposal for the pool before the flood mitigation was involved was not to do the flood mitigation, was to put the pool back as it is now, but you'd be dealing with the same issues. So again, but you don't flood out the 100-year storm. The, you, the site begins to become inundated now between the two and five-year storm, because we just showed you that, that, from that video, that that's what happens now. So, and that makes sense and jives with this purple line being the 10-year, right? You just would shrink this purple line into some degree, right? And then you would get your five-year, which was very accurate to what we saw out in the site on September 29th. So your site is underwater, at least for the five-year storm or more. And that storm has a 20% chance of occurring every year. So that's, that's.
So I feel like we're I, I feel like we, we spent a long time on this, and I feel a little bit like we're rehashing. So I guess two questions. One is, if we had, if we had the wettest September in 150 years in New York, does the fact that the ground is completely waterlogged affect, affect the analysis of this? Because it's not just water coming from the sky, but the fact the whole earth was soaked. My section is about cost benefit. The board decided, the board decided that $1.1 million was not worth it because it would take 50 times flooding a pool for it to cost $1 million for cleanup, as I remember, if we estimate $20,000 per cleanup. And so it was a difficult discussion, but there was some sense that, yeah, there was some sense that there was risk involved in, in any case. So I guess two different questions. One about the waterlogged ground in September, and two about cost benefit of this very expensive project.
The, the ground being saturated would only lend itself to localized flooding conditions. The flooding that you're seeing, that's the, that's most impactful, I'll say, and damaging to the pool, is, is the flooding coming from the pond, right? That, that's, that's the main, that pond is collecting, there's a water course that feeds that pond. And then you have the whole drainage area that basically gets that water course, feeds the pond, the pond overtops, and then comes through this culvert. The ground being saturated, that, that really wouldn't have any impact other than keeping your, your grass and your area wetter for longer and being more of a nuisance, to be honest with you. And maybe you might get some more groundwater seepage, which you did have in this pool filter area, which will now be a raised building above. The second thing with, with the flood mitigation is this doesn't just happen once every 20-something years. This, this is happening, I mean, your, your site's getting, getting pounded every, for any two-to-five-year storm event. So I can't speak to the analysis De Bruin did about the cost cleanup, but I will tell you, I did look through some of the numbers in the FEMA cost benefit. And their analysis showed, and De Bruin is doing a fantastic job. He did say that the village should do something. That was, that was, he gave you a number of alternatives. And, and the one that had the best cost benefit was the $1 million 25-year storm option, right? Because you don't, you don't need to pay for a bigger culvert when it shows that you have, through analysis, that you can take advantage of the existing box culvert that you have underneath the building and basically make it a dual culvert. But I actually estimated more around $300,000, and my, my cost benefit was closer to 0.6, 0.7. And the closest that you get to one means basically a go, right? And when you're between 0.5 and one, it's kind of like, yeah, you should probably do it, but there may be other decisions or factors that, that, that say not to do that. But, but you could see from this analysis, too, and De Bruin said, in the 10-year storm, this site's underwater. So, so, and, and you just saw the video, too, and the analysis that shows it's also underwater for the two-to-five-year storm. So unless you put a second culvert in and do something, your site's going to constantly be inundated with water, which means your brand-new pool and the pool filter equipment will also be sedimentated and risking damage, right? I mean, this was a two-to-five-year storm, and you saw what was on the site. Imagine if it was 100 to 500? I mean, you'd be suffering major damages to all the equipment and to the pool itself. So that, that's the, the $100,000 cleanup number, again, that was kind of light. And I think it actually, from, from the empirical data and speaking to the staff more, I think this is happening a lot more than what was necessarily included in the memo, because I've only been here a year, and I've seen it now, for a two-to-five-year storm, get completely sedimentated. And that was just one time. But yes, as far as the cleanup, you could argue, every cleanup is tens of thousands of dollars times, if you have multiple in a year, that's, that's, you know, you're getting to that $1 million for the, for the, for the, for the drainage. But no, we don't, we don't have an exact number now. That, that $1 million was just a conceptual estimate. De Bruin is going to put together, well, actually, CalGy will do that. But De Bruin could put us, put numbers on the side and give us a concept. But he still knows, De Bruin knows that they need to stay in the $1 million range for the box culvert. So it's not a $3 million fix, but it's not a $250,000 fix either.
The conversation with De Bruin way back when led to the point he made that it doesn't matter what we do, an Ida-scale event would still flood the pool and cause a lot of damage. And then the question was, are we, is it worth spending money? Would not. We wouldn't be immunized against that kind of debt. Anthony, when he arrived and dug further into it, as he just described, identified more detail about what was actually happening, got more detail from staff about the dynamics of all of this, and recognized also our, our cleanups, have been 20,000 sometimes, 80,000 sometimes. Depends what happens, what equipment is lost, etc. And it knocks the pool out. So if something like this happens during the pool season, we hypothetically lose a week, two weeks, three weeks, whatever it might be in order to recover.
Hold on, you're, so, how long is, is this good, it's good forever, or for how long?
Oh, the box culvert, 50, 50 to 75 years, if not longer. Oh, the the box of fifty fifty to seventy five years, if not longer.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it's it's precast. Sorry.
For me, the biggest difference is analysis because and I don't know if it's partly that I was misreading the information that we got before. I think Peter gives a good synopsis, but I think we were led to believe that the investment was not necessarily going to. Give us as much necessarily, whereas what you're showing us seems pretty different.
Well, I I mean, it's it's Bob De Bruin, as as Anthony already said, I think did a great job and he is still our engineer on this. And it's his data that is all of this. And to his credit, arrived boots on the ground. Uh and had an opportunity to dig further into it and I think added more detail. Uh and correctly, if I'm wrong.
Yes.
In agreement that this is a logical strategy.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, look, the 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 alternative.
I mean.
I mean, it's tough to not do. I mean, here's the alternatives, right? The one alternative is the do nothing alternative. Um I mean, and when I say that, you know, not replace the pool, leave it where leave leave the existing pool where it is. But even the refurbishment, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe to refurbish the pool was about a a million and a half dollar project, right?
Yeah, to bring it up the code, redo the gutter system, the liner, the vintage that was one point one in two thousand seventeen. So we're likely in the one point five to two million dollar range.
I I don't disagree. I don't disagree, right? And that's one point five. And then the pool still staying where it is and you're still subject to the same damages. You'll be up to that three million, four million dollar range in in the way the storms are are happening. But again, De Bruin saying this is on the on the water for ten years and he was he was right, he was very close to that. Uh but then you just witnessed what's happening between a two and five year storm. So that that report, his memo couldn't have accounted for all that. I mean, we had the luxury of 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 me seeing this and and us being part of that that September twenty nine storm. But, you know, thank God it wasn't devastating, but that was a two to five year storm. I mean, that wasn't even.
All right. I mean, I uh we got a bunch of other things. Is that have we said enough about the pool, do you think? Is there more to say, Anthony?
That's it.
Okay, great. So uh let's move to the next item, which I guess perhaps should be uh Clark Street. How about that?
Yes, actually, that's what I that's that's what I had. That's what I had in the queue. All right, so.
As you have all seen.
Let me just move up.
We've had some trouble years with Clark Street, uh but it seems that the system has almost completely failed. So.
Yes.
Different circumstance than one last.
Even as of now, right? Still packed inside the uh.
Yes.
By the whole playground.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
Three, three like.
We didn't avoid literally had to pump it out in a few occasions.
Yeah, pump it out today. All right, it's clear right now, but so Anthony, I uh.
You gave us a lot of detail at one point. I think you can give us the on this shoot for it.
Okay, so Clark Street um here, Bedford Road here, parking lot, Soldiers and Sailors Field up here. Okay, and I I do have video from this from this event too, because I did want to check a lot of the hotspots, at least that. Were were provided to me and everything did check out and everything did behave as I figured it would. Uh but I did take video of the pool, um excuse me, of the uh field area, which did pool up. Uh but just to give you some perspective, again, the parking lot, Clark Street, Bedford Road. So basically, all the drainage inside of the field, because there are a few catch basins. Uh under, you know, that that all interconnected, we don't know how, because the survey was only to pick up that there's basins there. I don't know how the network looks, but we'll we'll further explore that and most likely replace part of that network. Uh all the drainage from the site basically comes into a structure here, which is right when you when you when you park and you walk in right near the entrance. You'll notice that there's a um. There's a ditch or like a swell or open water course to the left of the entrance and to the right of the entrance. Then you'll see this big square, which is a structure that Jeff refurbished, I know shortly before he retired. Replaced this structure, which has multiple pipes coming into it. You can see the blue lines here, E, C, A, right, B. So they all come from the water courses. They come from the field. This is a junction, right? This is where they all connect. So that that all all the pipes connecting to one structure leave as one pipe. And then there's a catch basin right in the corner of of the parking lot where everything kind of drains this way. And then tooks a right or if you're in the parking lot facing Clark Street, you hook a left, but it goes down Clark Street. And connects to the. Existing drainage manhole, pretty much that's on the sidewalk along the curb at the intersection of Bedford Road and Clark Street. So this is the north side. But what I'm showing you here is a is an iteration of a plan that Jeff had proposed, which I don't disagree with. I might make some minor modifications to it, but his intent was 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 spot on, was to basically run a new storm line from. This newer structure he refurbished and put in all the way under the parking lot, right? Because it has now now we're gonna be draining by gravity, right? So the pipe will be higher here, lower here. But the thing is, the parking lot actually raises up pretty fairly quickly to meet Clark Street, right? You can see that from the numbers of the elevations, right? Three seventy, three seventy one, three seventy two. So the parking lot's going up, but the pipe's going down. So the pipe gets fairly deep at this manhole here, which is right at the entrance. This is the curb line. Where you see that the kind of the double the double lines here, that black line is the the future pipe, the new pipe. And you can see the difference, three seventy five to three sixty four, that's about eleven and a half feet deep here. So that's the difference of how 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 much dirt is above the pipe. The good thing is that we the pipe is so deep that it'll clear. Um all the laterals, all the service lines that serve each home, right? You have gas, water and sewer. You have to get underneath those. Um that won't be an issue. Um and again, it'll be contained pretty much in in the sidewalk. Now, if that's, you know, Jeff shows it here, I might pull it in again, it's a small detail. But we'd be working in the sidewalk grass curb area, not to say that the contractor wouldn't need some of the road. But it wouldn't be as a big disruption to the roadway as no to a typical utility project would be. So right now, the existing pipe, basically that collect that collects all the drainage here. Because it's the same configuration, we're just replacing the pipe with a newer, bigger pipe. That's all we're doing. This is a twelve inch pipe now, as it presently exists, that runs in the parking lot, comes to that drainage manhole. It shows that it it leaves the manhole as an eight inch tile pipe, which is clay, which is very brittle, cracks, collapses. And then hence you get tree roots and you get disjointed sections and then you get slowly draining um runoff, right? Because there'll be obstructions in the pipe uh that prevent the pipe from flowing efficiently. And then somewhere along the line, it pops back out in here as a twelve inch. So whatever, they 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 changed, we don't know if it's all clay pipe, if it's an eight inch clay pipe that's connected to a twelve inch metal pipe. We don't know, but we do know this. Um in October of twenty eighteen. Uh we did camera inspect the existing line and I want to change drawings real quick just to show you. Uh a better. Uh easier chart to follow. Okay, so this is existing. Nothing, nothing's proposed here. This is all all what exists here today. So the blue, the the lightest blue line that sees D, that's a drain line. That's a twelve inch line from here to here, then you'll see eight inch tile pipe goes down Clark, right, travels east down Clark. And connects that manhole. It's not shown, but we know that there is a pipe in there. So the the idea is to basically, we we put the, we did camera this manhole and we got. Several feet in, I don't know the exact distance, maybe forty, fifty feet in upstream. Fred Cook did it, not us, we had a vendor do it. And then we also had a vendor contractor camera or camera inspect through this manhole up. They could only get another fifty feet. So basically, between point A and point B down here, the pipe was inaccessible. It was filled with silt, sediment, um likely collapsed sections of pipe. I don't know if the entire pipe will pipe is clay or again, if it transitions to metal, metal also rots and and fails too. So the short of it is that this this field up here is poorly draining. Because its infrastructure, which is tied to here, is 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 failing. I don't know the condition of this line. It probably isn't that bad, considering that it's not clay. We believe it's a concrete pipe, uh but this this is definitely your culprit from the drain line here down down Clark. Uh to here, because we do know that there's clay pipe down there and we also televise it and we know that there's a problem on each side because we can only get so far in. Um so we do know, and again, if there was no collapsed sections and no no parts of the pipe that went disrepair. Uh you generally build a camera the entire line and you could note deficiencies, but it wouldn't be that bad where you can't even get it. So that replacing that pipe um from a twelve inch pipe to either a fifteen inch or eighteen inch pi- uh pipe would. Would address the issue of the poorly draining field and we wouldn't go any larger than the eighteen inch pipe. Because if you look in Bedford Road, all this drainage is tied to the county's storm sewer system, right? But you have a twelve inch pipe here, you have another mystery twelve inch pipe here, um but you have an eighteen inch pipe going out. So even if you made the pipe in here sixty inches, it would be constricted and limited to what this eighteen inch pipe could put out. So that's why Jeff put an eighteen inch, because it would make no sense to go any larger than that. Um and also what Jeff had done was he added in um two catch basins, I forget where, mid block somewhere. Because Clark Street has no drainage and anytime you have an opportunity to intercept drainage, coming down a fairly. Um I should say, coming down a fairly steep roadway, it helps prevent icing and um and snow buildup at the intersection. So it's not a bad thing either, either while you're doing this project to add in two catch basins. Uh that's that's really the overview of of uh the Clark Street drainage, but I did want to show you the field. Just to give you some reference too, but this is this is the rest of the survey. Merit's kind of broke out the survey into two different things, two different areas, right? This is the Clark Street down here and then and then this is the parking lot, that's that structure, that square structure that Jeffrey placed. This is the rest of the field. And if you look, Manville Road is here. And then you'll see in blue, draining it, draining it, draining it. Those are catch basins that are interconnected. Again, we don't show how they're connected because we don't know at this time how they are, but we know they are and we do know they are the connected via a pipe here. So collapsed section of pipe down here. Maybe over here too, would definitely cause the 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 field to take days to drain. No question. Um proximate cost, I did some conceptual calculations. Uh you're probably in, if you have to do some drainage work in the field, not in an elaborate drainage system for the field. You can go crazy with a with a collegiate level natural turf and synthetic turf drainage system. But just replacing the structures and and reconnecting them with new pipe, just to upgrade what's there uh without going too robust. Plus, running the new line down the parking lot, plus the new line down Clark Street to Bedford. Um that is about three hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And again, that based that that's based on contractor, recent contractor prices, uh but their schedule and and the market. So could it be four fifty? Yeah, that's on the higher end, obviously, um but I would say this is easily a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project.
And it seems that we have no choice but to do it and to do it pretty quickly. Would you agree?
Yeah, I mean, that's the 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 thing is, if if it's not addressed over time, I mean, it is a grassed area. Um so it's it's not, fortunately, it's not adversely impacting any adjacent properties yet. Uh but the the water does build up there, it shouldn't. Um and then if nothing else, you do have a prolonged downtime period, uh which would, I'm sure, affect. Mister Newman and his his programs uh for quite longer than it should. So, you know, having a field, especially with speech, yes.
This involves digging up the sidewalk all the way down Clark Street?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it depends how close we get to the sidewalk.
In the field.
Yes, and the fields as well, yes.
In the field itself, does grass all get dug up?
No, you don't have to do, it would just be a part of it. Yes, yes, it would it would only be, you know, the areas where they're fixing the catch basins and trenching for the new pipe. I wouldn't go crazy and start stripping and sodding it unless the village decided they wanted to to change it. But I mean, the the contractor would regrade it, seat it, mulch it and be done with it. But that that drainage would be limited only to really the area closest to the parking um to to the entrance. We wouldn't, we wouldn't extend. I'm sorry. Sorry, I heard somebody speak. I wasn't sure if if you had a question. I apologize if I can't hear you.
David's question was, is the pipe along Clark Street under the sidewalk or in the street?
It is under, so let me zoom in a little bit. This is the curb line. So see concrete curb? If you carry that line straight through. That's that's the, see, says edge of asphalt too. So this line right here is the. It is the existing uh curb. We wouldn't change that location. Right now, the manhole is in the driveway apron and the pipe is in between the curb shown here. And the edge of the sidewalk shown here. So it will not be in the road uh right against the curb. You you have gas, uh gas main, you have sewer in the middle of the road, which is where traditionally located, and you have water on the other side. So that's a good thing. Water and sewer on the other side, gas is here. Kind of is gonna want to know about the project because, as you can see, the existing eight inch tile pipe is fairly close, probably six, seven feet. Away from the gas main, so they like to be notified of these things and we would send them the plans as a courtesy to their capital group. Uh so that when we started the work, they wouldn't be surprised and they could have an inspector out there. Because if you're in what's called an angle of repos or a zone of influence um from their gas main. Depending on how deep your pipe is and our pipe is going to be much deeper than their gas main, they're gonna want to know that we're we're not within their tolerances. And if we are, that we're supporting their 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 pipe uh and not damaging it. So yes, the the future pipe would be David pretty much in the same location, you know, where it ends up. Is 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 TBD, but it'd be somewhere in the sidewalk with that grass strip adjacent to the sidewalk. But but still out of the road. I'm sorry. I can't hear you. I did not see any trees on this survey that would be affected now. Um but. So that and if and if there is a a tree that's not shown, because sometimes if if they're under, if they're under eight inch caliber. The uh surveyors don't necessarily have to pick them up per per ordinances and and traditional surveying practice. However, if there is a six inch caliber tree and we could realign the pipe a little bit, because remember, we we could, we don't have to put this manhole here. We could, we could put the manhole here and run it directly into the sidewalk. We can get closer in, you know, we have from here to here to work with. And that's probably about fifteen feet. So where?
Unless unless anyone disagrees, I don't think we have any choice but to charge ahead and get this bid and do it as soon as we realistically can. You guys agree, disagree?
Concern amongst the public, there's been a lot of discussions on it on social media, it's been pictures have been posted, so definitely.
All right, so there's the direction, Anthony. We gotta do it. Let's do it.
All right, very good. So this project, unless something changes, and I'll speak to Eric about it. Uh we do intend to design this in-house. I have AutoCAD, I I I have the survey. So really, it's just more of a time resource uh balance. Um if we can't, we will consult it out, but I have every intention of um of developing the construction documents, the drawings and the specifications in-house. To at least save, you know, and it is quite quite a bit of of a cost for the construction. So if we could save twenty five to fifty thousand dollars not having a consultant do this project, um then by all means, I think that's a win. So I have every intention of of keeping this in-house.
Very much appreciated. We know it's in good hands. All right, few other items I don't think you spend a lot of time on. Cooley Street uh is rolling?
Cooley Street is making significant progress, uh sharing the map that went out the other day with the Village E-Blast. But overall, uh very pleased with the progress. They have finished work. Basically, along the south portion of Cooley Street from Bedford Road. So this is Bedford Memorial Plaza, Manville Road. They finished what's, you know, what we call internally phase one, which is pretty much from the gas station entrance off of Cooley. Uh down to down and including the village lot, which you'll notice now has a temporary. One, no, it's a two way, but really only one car can fit. It's a temporary ingress and egress entrance until they get further down. And then they can make it wider. They have mafia blocks there now. So if you notice, it's a little tight here. It's only because it's a temporary opening and that was to give the public and the village back the um the village lot. So you'll notice that about a third of this lot, you know, probably in the in this general area here is repaved. And I was out there, the construction manager was out there, obviously overseeing it, and they did go thicker than we required. They went several inches with asphalt and they did, they did overextend their limits uh for the paving, meaning that. They're they were really required to restore what they affected, but they did go, they did go beyond a few feet beyond what they affected. In addition to cleaning up the site, street sweeping it, power washing it, they did do a little bit extra for the paving, which kind of looks like a seven here. And if you drive, if you drove it, you'll see it. Uh this walkway is open to the public uh entirely. It wasn't on Saturday, it is starting Monday.
Saturday, so it's it looked great. Yeah, it's really nice.
It's nice. No, I did it. Look, it's a really, that walkway is really the pinnacle and I I I it was it was a good move on the village's part to require this. As part of the site plan approval. So this is open, this is milled and resurfaced. Uh this is also uh reconstructed a portion of this driveway. Um this entrance is blocked and you'll see a ton of porta potties there. So and and traffic drums, which denote, don't go in this area here. Uh but basically, as of today. Uh, but basically as of today, uh, they do have up to almost a dentist's office. Kind of like I'd say this area midway of the parking lot. They've peeled up and ripped up a lot of the pavement, so they're down to dirt at this point and they're regrading. Uh, this road uh to flatten out the hill or, or, or the hump over here, uh, dropping it down. Not significantly, but, but, but enough to feel a difference and, and they're gonna realign the road a little bit vertically. So they're, they're about here now. Right, right at the start of, of, of the dentist's uh parking lot, uh, and the Cooley Street lot on the, on the left. Um, they do plan, big picture, they plan to have this project complete. Uh, by November thirtieth, on it before November thirtieth, before Thanksgiving, uh, one. The hurdle that they're working on now, which is not as much of a hurdle after our meeting with the state DOT today out in the field. They just need to get this area here permitted. So they submitted, they, meaning Vito's team, uh, their engineer submitted a highway work permit application. That was reviewed by the permanent engineer and Darylius. Uh, she had comments and one of the comments was, hey, you have to fill out this longer application. Uh, because the regional office deemed that it was necessary. So their engineers are working on resubmitting. Uh, the, the, the beef here of the applications for the work that's gonna happen in the state right away, which is curbing. Sidewalk. Water main that's gonna connect out to about here. And then a new storm pipe that's gonna connect out here from the two new catch basins. One's gonna go here in the corner of the lot. And the other one's gonna go in the other corner lot closest to the dentist's office. And then they're gonna be connected with a pipe. Left to right, and then one pipe's gonna go out to the street and connect to the state storm sewer system. So, but they need a permit. To do that work and they're very close, they're, they're very close to getting that. So in a perfect world, and we know it's not perfect. But if, if things do align, which they're looking like they will, especially at today's meeting. Um, the contractor is continuing to march down here, so he's about here right now. And by the time the engineers and the state. Address the permit for the work outside of here, he's gonna continue. With all his digging, his excavation, uh, pouring new curbs. Along here, uh, there's a new retaining wall that goes over here and then obviously this, you know, uh, water main. That gets extended to from where they stopped from the last uh phase of the project, which was somewhere right around here. So they're gonna do everything they can up into the state right away. Hopefully, before they get to this point, and it wouldn't matter if, if it was the day of. They will have a permit in hand to continue going and do the rest of the work in the state right away. If that happens and that, that this project, no question. Can be wrapped up, meaning paved from the state right away. All the way up here. Uh, to meet the second part on a before uh November thirtieth, before the wind, basically before the end of the construction season. And we will.
Beautiful, so.
Uh, it looks, it looks, I gotta say the walkway's dynamite and uh DPW is gonna do all the striping. So if, I know another question that might come up or we've been asked. Is what happens to the stalls? So there's gonna be parallel parking down here. And then around mid-block. Um, or by the key food entrance over here and by the, kind of the first entrance closest to the walkway, it turns into ninety degree parking. Um, from here, basically all the way up. But it was never really clear in the drawings who was doing that work, but I'd rather DPW do the striping. Uh, it's easier for us to control. Uh, the staff is very good at the striping. They did everything in Memorial Plaza. So we're gonna handle the striping, but we're waiting until uh the final pavement course is on there and the parking meters are in to do the striping.
Alright, great. Alright, so we're running out of time. We just need a, a one-minute hit on these remaining items. Nantahagan Wall making progress?
Nantahagan Wall is, is making excellent progress. Uh, the consultant and us have started a dialogue. The. The contract is executed. So thank you, Mayor and Board for authorizing the administrator to do so and thank you, Eric. The contract is authorized. Uh, the next step is, is as such. Project kickoff meeting, we're gonna go over the objectives, what information they need, what information we need. Start setting the, the table so we can sit there and eat and start, and start, and start digging in. Um, and then the other piece of information we need is I'm gonna have merits go back out. I'm gonna ask merits to go back out and add some additional survey information on there. Um, from the last storm, I just want to show you a quick video. From the last storm, uh, there was some additional pieces of the wall that got undermined in the, in the taller parts. And, and the side of the wall closest to the road. Um, so I want merits to pick that up and there's two pipes that go across the brook. That I want to pick up. One is a sanitary sewer lateral and the other one's a water service line for the, both for the. Waters for the cottage school, sewers for the PCTV building, but I want to, to capture that because we need to do, we need to improve those and, and. Basically re-engineer those two lines coming out. So that's not the original survey. So once merits goes out. Gets the updated information, we'll give that final survey to the consultant. Um, and right around that time, we'll have a project kickoff meeting and we estimate, I was speaking to Eric about this earlier. Probably designed through the winter. And then the spring of next year, uh, and depending on the timing of the, of the comments from the, again, we have to do it Armicor in DC. Maybe this is a fall twenty twenty-four construction project, if not, spring twenty twenty-five construction project. Uh, but I did wanna show you the video of the Nantahagan Brook. Um. I wanna share my screen so you could see this. Uh, and this is after the river, uh, excuse me, after the brook had calmed down quite a bit. And this is September twenty-ninth, uh, probably late, late morning, early afternoon. But you can't see it now, but there's a debris line that actually was up in the road. And there was a debris line up here. So the water level actually dropped. So what you see, this is more of a relaxed state. But again, this is the type of velocity and flow that you're gonna see um a, as you climb out of the. A, a, as you kind of come into the site and when you see these bad storms, if you can see the pictures, these are the uh. You know, this, 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 this is very, very quickly moving water. And it was on Lake Street and it was up on the grass at one point. So I think it's just important uh to give context to that. You can see the picture, correct?
Yes. Yes, we can.
That's a lot of water.
Extreme sports kayaking, you know?
Yeah, we did, we did joke around and say that we could white water raft in there. Um, but that, that's the type of. Type of water that if you get caught in that, you know, animal, human, wouldn't matter, that'll drag you and that, that, that. That, if you survived it, you know, you, you, you're definitely pushing your luck. So, um, as you can see. Following the storm though, there were parts of the wall. That are now missing that DPW alerted me to and then I checked and I said, oh yeah, wow, there's, there's bigger pieces towards the bottom. Um, on the side of the wall closest to the road where the wall is probably its highest, which is as you get closest to the entrance. So. It's good that we approved the project. Thank you again for that. Um, and that project's still estimated. Uh, you know, it's hard now, but based on concept numbers, anywhere from one point one to one point two five. Eric, I know that you had suggested maybe bonding a little bit more than that just to leave a cushion. But I, I, I think that's a smart move, but I, I, I would say this, again, this could fall anywhere from a million to one point two five. And this project too, again, designed during, this would be designed from now through the winter and the spring permitting. Again, maybe, maybe this is a fall, fall project or, or, or spring twenty twenty-five. Fall twenty twenty-four or spring twenty twenty-five.
Inspector there with Eric last week and we are over there at PCTV.
Nobody thinks it's been, alright, uh, just thirty seconds on water rate study?
Water rate study, Mister Mayor, the uh consultant would have incurred. We'll have a draft report uh by November thirtieth on a before November thirtieth and a final report. Uh, by the end of, on a before the end of January of twenty twenty-four. Uh, they were waiting on one major piece of information that Eric and Noreen uh did a good job and had involved munis. Uh, basically what that information was, was, was the um, the raw water data consumption, basically all the, all the water that all customers are using. Over the last five-year period. So it wasn't just hit a button and wanna run a report. Uh, there was quite an amount of effort put into that. Um, Eric could speak more to that, but I know him and Noreen had to retain munis and I, and work with them to really kind of gear that report. So. That was the last kind of big piece of information that they were waiting on and as you could surmise, one of the most critical pieces of, of information. So now that they have that. Uh, we're still positioned uh to get a final, excuse me, a draft report um within the next month and a half.
Great. And once that's all worked through, that will set us up for planning the future up to and including. Replacing the tanks and understanding the financial dynamics of the whole thing.
Yes, and we'll set you up for the major capital improvements and then hopefully an annual program, an annual capital program. Where there's X amount of dollars, a few hundred thousand dollars, whatever the number is. That you can allocate, begin to allocate and develop a water main replacement, water main and water valve. Uh, replacement schedule, cause neither have been replaced in quite a bit. And as you know. Over the last few uh year I've been here, I've replaced about four or five valves just on my watch. Uh, but, and that was a sixty thousand dollar endeavor to replace four valves. Uh, cause both situations were emergency work, which as we know, you pay more on a premium uh for emergency work. So the um. The long, the short of it, yes, they will generate a, a number. They'll take all of our expenses, all of the debt service. Um, any plans we have for the capital, our current water rates, and they're gonna give recommendations. Hey, you should change your rates. This is what they should be over the next five years. You should do two, two, two percent, then three, three, three percent, whatever it is. Um, they'll say, okay, if you wanna keep X amount of dollars in fund balance, Eric, they'll say, okay, if you wanna keep X dollars in fund balance and you have Y operating expenses. Uh, and then you have Z capital projects, this is what your water rate should be. This is the structure it should be and this is how much you need to charge your customers to basically keep your fund balance up. Uh, fund maybe a, a modest capital, annual capital project. Um, for annual water replacement, water main replacement, and then obviously pay the bills and keep the lights on. So. They're gonna give you all that information. They'll give you a state of how healthy the water system is, um, you know, how big it is and it'll be. It's a really, really good project for the money. Um, it, you know, wasn't, it was, it was, it was a well proportioned fee and I think that the village. Made the right move by, by advocating this. I know Eric was, was, was looking at that, cause you know, how much water are we using, right? We're paying excess charges to, to the New York City Water Board. Are we losing water? But I will tell you, for peace of mind, the um.
We're five minutes past the witching hour here. Eric can give us the Manville project. Two sentences on civic space.
Civic space, we got the final set of going to, to review actually just hours ago. Uh, but we're still scheduled, Mister Mayor and Board, uh, we're still anticipating Eric and I. Advertising for bid or getting your authorization to advertise for bid. Um, at the December first meeting in December, which is the um, December eleventh meeting. So on December twelfth. Uh, we would likely advertise this project for six to eight weeks, go through January, February, get bids back, evaluate, award. And start construction tentatively, let's say, late spring, early summer of twenty twenty-four, because a lot of that work. You know, especially the wall that goes around the existing monument where, where the flagpole is now. That wall's under the Manville Road project. The, the civic space project, unfortunately, that site work is dependent on that wall being there and, and then going inwards towards the parking lot. So. This project is, is a little bit beholdeth, actually a lot of bit beholdeth to the progress that the Manville Road project makes. But would all things be equal? Assuming that the project, the Manville Road project gets wrapped up um in the spring of next year or close to wrapped up in that area. Uh, we anticipate construction for the civic space to start late spring, early summer uh of twenty twenty-four.
Alright. Anthony, thank you so much for all of this. It, it seems pretty clear the village of Pleasantville is keeping you pretty busy.
Yes, no, no shortage of work for the two square mile village. No, no shortage of work.
We appreciate the good work. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Board. Thank you very much. And Eric, thank you.
Take care, Anthony. Thank you.
Take care, everyone and enjoy the rest of your night.
Right.
Bye.
Alright. So, uh, that finishes up our work session. We could return to work session afterwards if there are more things to go uh with, but. Um, we have so far attracted not much of an audience, but it is eight oh seven. Uh, so we will move to our regular meeting. Welcome to the village board, village board meeting for the village of Pleasantville. Today is Wednesday, October eleventh. Uh, we are meeting on Wednesday of this week instead of Monday because of the. Columbus Day holiday on Monday the ninth. Our next regular meeting is. Uh, a week and a half from now, back to our regular Monday schedule, Monday, October twenty-three, work session at seven, regular meeting at eight. Uh, as is always the case, you can attend our meetings normally at eighty Miller Avenue. Today camped out on a Wednesday at the senior center. Uh, and you can also pick up a Zoom link at Pleasantville-ny.gov for this meeting as well as. Uh, many other meetings that go on in the village if you would like to uh, uh, watch remotely and within a matter of a few days. Uh, the video recordings of our work session, regular session are available on demand at PCTV seventy-six dot org again. Uh, a few announcements uh before we start, I think first and foremost, um, everyone's mind is. Uh, the horrifying uh attack on Israel. And uh, obviously the impacts of that will be felt for a long time coming, but uh. Uh, and we're born, I'm certain that every one of us and your village government. Uh, are horrified by what has happened uh and are. Um, sending out. Our thoughts and prayers uh to the Israeli people after this attack. Uh. Bunch of other things to report. Uh, uh, first and maybe I'll defer to Paul on this, the block party happened.
Yes, um, so. It was, you know, obviously Friday, the, the weather was really bad, rain and everything was happening and all the plane that we saw today from those videos, but. Um, I'm really thankful to all the heads of departments that we were able to come together and we. Continue to have dialogue all Friday, all the way up till about six thirty at night. When we had a text going through and we said, you know, all the flooded areas have been taken care of and. You know, we were just gonna see if there was any damage the following day. Luckily, at eight thirty in the morning, we had another text that day and we decided to go forward with the event. And uh, and it was great. It was wonderful and that. I think everyone was so excited to get out there from the week and before having other plans canceled and then all the rain the night before. That I think it really brought out a good amount of people was back. We, we had. Uh, both sides on Washington and we are having very well attended. Um, I had a lot of people come to me and, and tell me how thankful they were that they have this event. Especially a lot of parents with their kids. They really enjoyed having these events that were free and they really appreciated that. The village did this in, in, in association with the Chamber of Commerce or vendors or, you know, everyone else. It was, it was really something great that was done for the community and um, you know, I'm happy to report that. Uh, there were no issues at all. I spoke to BPW, I spoke to. The police department, there were no issues at all with um, open container law being waived whatsoever. If anything, a lot of um, adults told me they were, they're really glad that they were able to have that ability to go up and down the street and. Just be relaxed and that didn't really become an issue at all. If anything, more rest and how come Washington wasn't the same way too, so that they can, you know, continue to go to the other street. Um, but I think it was a really well uh attended event and um. You know, I definitely have some, some thoughts and ideas for the future. And I think that it was, it was a great first time that we were able to do it this way and, and I saw a couple of the, of, of my fellow trustees. There and I think everyone seemed to really enjoy it. So I was, I was really happy with the. Final product of it and I think we on social media as well, I saw so many comments and just how great the event was and. What was a great scene for PCTV that, that their, their recordings had come out soon, they found. A majority of people that were there were. People with children with less than the age of six years old and many of them have only lived in Pleasantville for about two or three years. And this was amazing to them. It felt like they were like back and they're living in the city, they're saying. So. It was really nice to, to see that. So we'll be able to see that recording on PCTV. If you aren't there, you can take a look. A lot of people were interviewed and um, should be really good. So thank you to the village for, for supporting this event. I think it was, was a group effort. Huge thanks to everyone involved.
Thanks to you, Paul. Obviously, I had that major dome on the whole thing and to the Chamber of Commerce for all that they did. Uh, I ended up unable to attend because of the uh rainy day moving into the second weekend. I was at town, like. Everybody seems to have had a great time. Kudos to you. Uh, this coming weekend, weather permitting, is the annual farm market apple pie contest. Uh, a whole bunch of judges, myself among them. Uh. Hard, it's a hard job, but I accept it willingly. Uh. There is some uncertainty about the weather and it, and there's a chance that the contest might be put to the following Saturday, twenty-fourth, but as of the moment. Uh, it's the fourteenth and I can report. Uh, uh, folks who are not participants in the contest. Have the opportunity to buy a slice of the pies. Uh, thereafter, which is a, a fundraising event uh that supports the farm market as well and an opportunity to uh. To see what a prize-winning pie tastes. A whole bunch of categories. It's a great event that you've been going on a very long time. Um, the uh. You wanna give a quick update, uh, Eric, on the Manville Road project? We had expected the next phase to be up and running and. Uh, it is not yet.
Yep. So, uh, the contractor, uh, PCI uh for the Manville Road project is obligated then certain, certain thresholds for. Subcontracting work uh to women minority-owned businesses. Um, uh, based on their outreach, they had a few back out and um, uh, many more uh declined the job. So uh, they were unable to reach that threshold. DOT will not authorize payment unless um. They engage that, that threshold or get a good fees effort waiver. They're going through that process now. Um, they, uh, the Office of Civil Rights for DOT have responded. Um, wanting more information, which they submitted actually uh this afternoon. Um, so uh, we're rather hopeful that they will get this waiver in, in the last steps. The. Uh, big question moving forward is. Uh, big question moving forward is if they do get it, uh, that waiver, when will they and, um. How much time and how much work can they do before winter conditions there? So. Uh, the next step is once we know that they've been approved. Uh, we'll talk to them about realistically how quickly can they mobilize and what do they expect to get done? Um, you know, worst case scenario is it gets kicked off early, uh, early spring. Um, which still puts our civic space on, you know, footing that we, we expected. It doesn't really move that kind of. Same.
There's always something, huh?
Yes.
So we, uh, I, I can report, um. As, as many folks may have noticed, uh, uh, the new building, Seventy Memorial Plaza, uh, right next to the post office. Uh, included in its plans, a walkway with a public right of access that goes from Memorial Plaza down to Cooley Street. They did an absolutely beautiful job, beautifully escape the walkway. It opened a few days ago. And, uh, now for the first time in anyone's memory, very possibly for the first time in the life of this village. Uh, there is a really beautiful, uh, very pleasant pedestrian through from Memorial Plaza down to Cooley Street. I urge folks. To take a look. It's a lot of benefits delivered by that project to us. Um. Shout out to three folks. We, we had a, uh, little party in, uh, last, uh, Friday night. Uh, with, uh, sort of core folks who are involved in running the music festival to honor three longstanding volunteers who are now. Retirees from the Pleasantville Music Festival. Uh, Mark Orwall, who's been involved, I think since day one in, in many capacities, but has been one of the. Core folks keeping the Chill Tent operating, uh, decided. He would rather, uh, at this point in his life, uh, find a lawn chair and enjoy the festival as a. As a watcher instead of a maker of it, uh, very well deserved. Andy Goodman, uh, a former director of the festival at one point, uh, and the keeper of festival communications in a thousand ways. Uh, really extraordinary, extraordinary service to the festival. And then lastly, Jim Zimmerman, uh, the founding director of the music festival. Uh, he and Bernie Gordon and the mayor, I can see you got the idea and, uh, Jim ran it for the first couple of years and then. Retired from the running of it, uh, uh, but didn't retire from the involvement and has been the. Sort of a keeper of the Chill Tent stage for a very long time as well. So. Uh, Mark, Andy and Jim, uh. Uh, extraordinary service to the music festival, uh, that will not easily be forgotten. Uh, and we were hopeful that we gave them such a good send off that they won't actually. Then a few dates to update people on, uh, uh, coming up soon, the Ragamuffin Parade is on Sunday, October twenty-two. Buster at ERS at noon-ish. Have I got that right?
Step off at twelve thirty.
So, uh, Sunday, October twenty-two, the Ragamuffin Parade started at ERS, marched down, uh, Memorial Plaza for some further festivities. Um. Veterans Day is coming up on Saturday, November eleven. Uh, we'll have more to report soon about exactly where that ceremony will be held. Uh, because it takes place on a Saturday and the logistics of that are different than they are when. Uh, Veterans Day falls, uh, during the week. And then, uh, looking forward, uh, a little down the road, the lighting ceremony. Uh, for our, uh, tree and radio Wednesday, um, November twenty-ninth. All right.
You're seeing as how there's no school on Thursday of June by the tenth. Were there any questions for having the event on the day on which it's observed by the.
It, so I, I, I see both sides. Yeah, right. I'm going to reach out to, to the American Legion folks to see what they think that the idea of Veterans Day is that it would be a. Uh. A ceremony would occur on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month. And, uh, um, uh, we'll see how folks feel about that. School is closed on the tenth?
Yeah, yes.
For Veterans Day.
Okay, so that might create an opportunity. So we'll see what the American Legion has to say about that. So more on that. Uh, soon, uh, clearly we'll have our usual Veterans Day ceremony. It will either be Friday the tenth or Saturday the eleventh.
I'm not expressing a preference. I just.
Yeah.
Friends of, friends of school kids is something.
Yeah, right, right. No doubt. And we often have, uh, school singers come and participate in it. So. Uh, stay tuned on that. Uh, we'll see what the professional American Legion persons. Other announcements from other folks on any other subject?
Yes, I did. Um. The Chamber of Commerce is doing a campaign called, it's called a support local incentive card. Um, so participating, um, places in Pleasantville Stores or restaurants. So we have Freddy's, Goldie's, Lucio's. Tesoro, Whiffy Fire, Southern Table, Rock and Tour, Pleasantville Westchester Table Tennis, or Speedy Glass Onion Craft, the Pleasantville Diner. Pleasantville Books Store, King's Crown, Flyables and Balance Attrition. So. All of these local, um, businesses have a, a card that you can go by there and grab. It's one card for family. And wherever you go and shop there and get anything in any of those places, you'll get a sticker on there. The more stickers that you get, um. You'll be in a drawing for gift cards from all these different places. So it's, it's a way to incentivize specifically. Um, people that are coming into Pleasantville and this started on October eighth and it goes till October fifteenth. You can go to any of those stores and you'll see that those, um, restaurants or business owners will have. A card that they can give you and then whatever your purchase will give you a sticker and you can go to all the other ones. So. We hope that, um, people can do that. I think it'd be great and that you're supporting local businesses. And you're also getting to a drawing to get some free gift cards.
All right. Sounds like fun. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. They're always coming up with new ideas. Um. Follow on to that, uh, and this certainly is an exhaust, is not an exhaustive list, but we've had some good news, I think, in. Our downtown, uh, with some storefronts being occupied, um. The former steakhouse, uh, next to Frank and Joe's is turning into a New Orleans style restaurant. Crawdaddy.
Crawdaddies.
Is it?
Crawdaddies.
Uh, uh, operated by a joint venture, uh, between the folks from Rack on Tour and called Three Folds.
Correct.
Um. Uh, half of the former Pleasantville Pharmacy site is going to be renovated. Uh, to become a dentist office. He's gone through the approvals of all of that, uh, and soon you'll see some work going on there as well as work to. Convert the other half into a space that has its own entrance. Um. The, uh, storefront just to the left of Rodent Endrin and to the right of Kimberley House. Uh, which had some time back housed in stone and tile place, has now turned into a new, uh. Gift store that focuses on gifts as well as stationary items. Uh, and I walked by it tonight and, uh, it looks like that store is, is, uh, ready to rock and roll. You may have noticed that a, a few months ago at forty-eight Miller, uh, the site of the former LS Jewelry has now, uh, been renovated and opened as a. Uh, spa and massage, uh, location. So a whole bunch of things going on. Good to see this sort of activity. We're, um, optimistic that we'll hear soon from. Uh, the landlords at thirty-nine Washington, uh, about the remaining space, uh, there between. King's Crown and Chase and also, uh. Soon enough to, to hear what kind of commercial use may appear at seventy Memorial. So. Uh, whole, whole lot of good stuff, uh, going on. Um, then the last thing I wanted to, uh, call out, which is likely not going to get heard by, uh, mostly the folks who need to hear it. Is that we've had a, a ground swell of concern and complaints about, uh. The way people park, idle, stop, stand, uh, the dirt pickup and drop off at school terms. Uh, petitions from, uh, uh, folks who are concerned about school safety and pedestrian safety in those areas. Petitions from, uh, residents who live near, uh, these schools. Obviously a whole lot is happening in a short period of time. Everybody's sensitive to that, but there are no stopping, no standing and no parking zones for a reason. Uh, and those no parking zones are not zones where. It's okay to park because it's just a short period of time. They're not places it's okay to park because you're still in your car. Those are spaces that have been, uh, uh, designed to improve safety, to improve the capacity for people to sit around corners. And, uh, the problem has gotten, uh, quite severe. So, uh, uh, Chief Pressner has been, um. Uh, focused on that and sending some extra patrols, uh, uh, trying to move people along. If we don't see significant approvals, folks are going to be at risk of. Uh, getting tickets for this kind of behavior. Please, 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 um, everybody's behalf. Uh, follow the rules, park farther away and walk if need be. You cannot, uh, continue to clock out. Uh, no parking zones in this way and, uh. Putting on your flashers is not a, uh, universal, uh. Uh. Means of getting out from other tenants. Please help, so.
Um. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, so, so for three years from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, we ran something called the Candy Call. The goal was to. Um, allow children who for health or other reasons. Could not go to order door trick or treating, uh, particularly during the pandemic. To have the experience of, uh, a reverse trick or treat. The, um, uh, village board, uh, members of the, uh, Pleasantville Unified Pre-School District Board. Uh, the, uh, Pleasantville Fire Department and the Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps. Uh, took, uh, candy that was, uh. Generously donated by villagers and others and, uh. Uh, drove the entirety of the village and the school district and threw candy out. Now, uh, with. The sort of new normal resuming, we are. Uh, folding this into, we're not going to be doing that event this year, but we are going to create something called First Treat. Where we'll still take donations, but now at the end of the, um, Ragamuffin Parade. We'll have a, uh, a booth in Memorial Plaza that'll be signed and kids can come. And do their first trick or treat and it will be a treat. Um.
No tricks?
Uh, no tricks at the booth.
Hard tricks, something.
Uh, if we get somebody who can do that. And, uh, I assume most of us will probably take a stand at the booth before their booth not regular. Uh, so there will be a donation box going up. It's up. It, it, there is a donation box up, uh, at the police entrance to Village Hall.
And.
Where you can, uh, uh, donate for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, David. Uh, okay, anybody else? Anything?
Uh, yeah. Oh, okay, here we go. Um, so when we had the block party, we were, Fire Department, they're, they're a big hit. And, uh, they were also had some of them for the American Red Cross. It was there in their booth. And they're doing a program specifically that is offered in Rockland County, Wexler County, and they're offering free home fire safety information. And smoke alarm installations. Um, the idea was just to provide that. Um, home fires claim seven lives every day, but they said together we can help and change that. So I'll get this flyer sent out. To, to the village so we can possibly share it on our social media. Um, this specifically, like I said, it's, it's, it's a free service that they're doing and they're just trying to. Essentially educate and just, you know, help everyone, um, just be more safe. But I think there's, there's concerns that. There, you know, there could be code issued or anything. It's not, that's not really what they're doing. They're more just trying to. Just kind of give you an idea of, um, you know, how safe is it where you are? And at the same time, if there's anyone that's concerned that if they were to have. Um, if they don't have status in this country or anything like that, this isn't. Anything they have to worry about. This is just specifically. Trying to educate everyone and making sure that people have working. Um. Smoke alarms and, and just overall have a, a safe environment that could prevent a fire. So we'll send that information out. They're working with us with the Chamber of Commerce as well. And I think that it's something that's really valuable that I think everyone should take a look at, especially. It's been a while since you checked on your acquired, um, smoke alarm detectors.
Hey, thank you for that. Uh, any questions of any sort from a member of the public? We have no audience and I see no attendees, so no hands raised. With that, let's go to the resolutions. I'll show my screen. Number. Three forty-four.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves the amendments of the Rayla Need House December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Please go to a second.
Second.
Comments or corrections to the minutes? Who in favor?
I.
I approve two forty-five. Triple.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for the fiscal year ending twenty twenty-four as listed below. Budget transfer of the general fund. Thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars from contingency to street lighting equipment. Uh, appropriate special purpose fund account. Twenty-six thousand seven hundred dollars parkland deposit for electrical work Memorial Plaza Civic Space, Phase One. Increase of revenue and expense of the capital fund, twenty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. Interfered fund transferred from Parklands for the, uh, Memorial Plaza Civic Space, uh, Phase One.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Eric, you're still, still be back in the middle of the road if I get any of this wrong, but, uh. Thirty thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars for street lighting equipment is, uh, new poles, decorative poles and, and lamp, uh. Uh, elements for the, um, new Cooley Street project, uh. Uh, the developer doing seven memorial is, uh, pushing that straight through at their expenses, part of their project as a full two-way street. And they agreed to, uh, make that a whole bunch of. Uh, improvements to the infrastructure. We agreed to pay for new street lights rather than repurposing old ones. Uh, so, uh. I'm really quite optimistic that that's going to be a really nice, uh. Streetscape significantly improved over the last week for a long time. And then, uh. The electrical work for Memorial Plaza, which actually, uh, uh, is kicking off now, right?
Yeah.
Um. Is, is funded by this transfer from parkland deposit, which is monies that are deposited into a special purpose fund. Paid by developers for, for people who sell their bike property for their rental car. Have I said it all accurately? You did. You know, we have a rather large balance in that account. We can use it for the civic space and we're basically bringing. Electricity from across Mandeville Road, um, from a common, a utility pole to the civic space. So that's what we're seeing right now. We obviously want to do that work before they end up repaving Mandeville Road, um. So not to dig into a newly paved road when you do that.
I'm excited, having looked at the map of Cooley Street before, um, it really gives you a sense how. The downtown is going to feel like much more unique.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think having Cooley Street. Two ways, like I really had a sense now of what a game changer that's going to be and then we have the civic space in place.
Yeah.
It's going to be, you know, much more of a complete downtown. That's really great.
The walkway too, people don't realize yet.
Yeah.
It's beyond, but. I used it twice. It's open. Just to get from point A to B.
Yeah.
So nice.
Yes, it is so nice. And honestly, shout out to, you know, Eric, uh, his team. Uh, they, uh, designed and built that. That was part of their site plan, uh, approvals. Uh, as has been true for lots of aspects of the building, uh. They, I think, might walk in beyond.
Yeah, and the alignment was the gazebo crosswalk and then your bus stop and everything, it all actually is important.
I know, it's exciting.
That's the idea. And actually, if I could just say one thing about the, uh, Memorial Plaza, we had the PD line. Uh, just accident rates comparing, you know, since we made those adjustments compared to pre-polling.
Oh, yeah.
And actually we've seen a reduction of about twenty-five percent number of accidents. So, um.
It's worth it down on social.
Yeah, you know, a lot of people, when that change first occurred, a lot of people said, oh my God, oh my God, oh my God. Uh, uh, and yet, you know, the reality is just as we hoped, A. Expanded availability of parking, B, if they're going to get in and out of parking, and C. It's tighter instead of a thruway, means that people are more careful.
See after so now.
All right. Good news. All in favor?
I.
I approve three forty-six, David.
The Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment claims dated October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. For first school year ending twenty twenty-four, covering check numbers one oh eight, seven oh seven to one oh eight. Eight, eight, seven, and general fund two hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Special fifty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents for the water fund. Sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and one cent. For the capital fund, five hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty cents. For the refuse fund, fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. For a total of eight hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventeen cents. The payment of claims is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So big number because we're paying the payback.
And, and we did last time, except the contractor gave us the, the wrong company name. Um, so we had to reissue the check, which is why we canceled that check and had to reissue that.
All right. Comments, questions? Uh, all in favor?
I.
I approve, Michael, three forty-seven.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village board to advertise for bids for electrical services.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Straightforward? Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, three forty-eight, Matthew Paul.
Three forty. Result of the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise forbids for electrical services.
Let's move. Yeah, I'm sorry. It was, I, your name number should have been three forty-nine. My, I sent you. Now, now, yeah, what's going on?
Forty-seven.
You read forty-seven.
No, it's in forty-eight. It should be plumbing.
Oh, it should be plumbing.
So three, I see. The title is correct. I see. All right. So.
Right, 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 right.
Gotcha. Why don't you just read that again, three forty-eight, substitute plumbing?
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise forbids for plumbing services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Be good. We don't want any electricians.
And so we just, we, we bid out for electrical work and plumbing work and the contracts are becoming. So.
Oh, okay.
All in favor? I motion approved. Three forty-nine, Nicole.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby proves the hiring of the following part-time recreation assistant, job code zero two six nine. Zainah Elsho, Elshohawi, twenty-two dollars effective ten, twelve, twenty-three. For the Panther Club Program, Franklin Jackson the third, also at a rate of twenty-two dollars. Also affected ten, twelve, twenty-three and also for the Panther Club Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, constant, constantly hiring to maintain the stock of folks at Panther Club. David, three fifty.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby proves the hiring of Frank ALO, recreation assistant on an as needed basis effective as of September sixth, twenty point three. An hourly rate of sixty-five dollars for the purpose of senior center activities.
Is there a second? High rate.
Correct. He is actually a crossing artist well and a teaches chorus.
And the question is, does he sing to kids when they cross?
If not, he should.
All in favor?
Aye.
My motion approved, three fifty-one.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Thomas E. Wilson, the title assistant, owner of Major's Foreman, job title code zero four three nine. CSCA major, schedule A, group assistant foreman, lead maintenance mechanic, step six, and salary of ninety-one thousand and six dollars, effective Monday, October sixth, twenty twenty-three. Said if one minute subject in a relational period, in a minimum of four weeks, they're getting extended to a maximum of thirty-sixty-two weeks.
Is there a second? Tom Wilson, longstanding employee, delighted to see him have this opportunity. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, three fifty-two. Bring us home.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes and hires the following part-time available recreation assistant effective October twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Stephanie Kek, twenty dollars an hour rate for the budget code of admin building, special events, youth and adult.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Welcome, Stephanie. Anything further to add?
That's all I got.
Any further comment from members of the board or members of the public? There being none, is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you all for your attention or for your future attention if you watch online at acptbseventy-six dot org. We will see you in two weeks on Monday, October twenty-three. Thank you.